We're now opening the City of Dunellen Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, July 19th. It's now 5:30 PM. Will we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. May be seated. We have a roll call, please.
Give me just one second. There's one recording that...
Just a moment. We're having some technical issues here. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Chairman, Chairwoman Darville.
Here.
Commissioner Pierpont advises that he's not going to be able to be here tonight. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Dunn. Alternate Chelfield. Commissioner Hilton is... She did not reply, so I didn't get a response.
May we have proof of publication?
I'm sorry. Ms. Kelly Wyon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Brackens.
Now we can have proof of publication.
Yes, ma'am. The agenda was posted on the City of Dunellen's website and City Hall bulletin board on Tuesday, July 12, 2022.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to delay the public comment for just a few minutes. We are going to have the approval of our minutes and the report, staff report on the vacation rentals, and then we will accept the public comment. So just a slight change there. May we look at the minutes? And have you had a chance to review those minutes? Ms. Sheffield, have you had a chance to review the minute? Are there... Is there any discussion or changes to be made to those minutes? You see?
I have a few.
Okay.
Under Public Comment on the first page. And these are minor things, but just to make it sound a little more clear. The last paragraph under Public Comment where it says, "He spoke about the city of Crystal River, their law against short-term rentals, and a software program which helps them maintain the law." That to me... Which helps them...
Well, it's just a word preference.
Maintain them.
If that's what was said, I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
Any comments on that?
The other one was on the second page when Commissioner Dunn motioned to approve. I'd say moved to approve the May 17 minutes. Changed motion to moved.
Yes, and when we review the minutes, we go by the audio and we...
Yeah, they're...
We write exactly what was said according to the audio recording.
I didn't say motion.
We can verify that information and update it if...
I would just say moved to approve. Or made a motion. And then the other one was at the bottom of that page. And too, if you're going by the audio, but Attorney Brackens explained signs are considered speech per the US Supreme Court.
Because I raised the question on that ordinance, there was speech.
I would say free speech.
I said, "Why are they using this antiquated language?" He said, "Because Supreme Court has dictated signs are considered speech, and that's why it was in the ordinance."
And that's illegal speak. That's a term of art. Speech rather than... Free speech is what's in the Constitution. But when you determine, when you're looking at something, you look at whether or not it's speech or not. So that's kind of a term of art. So it's correct in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Clarifies it for me.
Anything else? Then, Jo, I have a motion. We approve the minutes with a couple of the word changes as requested.
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
When, on the next to the last page where it says Commissioner Dunn stated blah, 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 the next to the last paragraph. Commissioner Walter stated she had spoken with Mr. Shepherd, and he stated there is no issue with putting in a driveway there. To me, that was unclear, and it would be more clear to say in the old location, in the location where the police station is. Isn't that what you meant?
Yes, but that's not... I mean, I said what was...
Okay. Well, to me, it's more clear when you're reading it back for the public, just to say where is there.
But if they're making minutes from what was actually said, they can't...
Okay.
They can't expand and add intent.
Correct. Yes, we have to go by whatever is in the audio.
Okay.
Whatever you said.
Okay.
So with that being said, do I have a motion to accept the minutes with a couple of the word changes that was approved? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve June 21, 2022 minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of minutes with the minor changes. The next item on the agenda that is number two is the discussion and review of the proposed ordinance regarding vacation rentals. And as I explained, we're going to have the staff report, and then we're going to accept public comments at that time. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes.
And so as per the staff report, we are submitting the ordinance for your recommendation to council for approval of the regulation requirements based on Chapter 166 of the Florida statutes. This ordinance basically refers to specific regulations that are going to be taking place with regards to short-term rentals. And the most important thing to focus on is that the city's vacation regulations contained herein neither prohibit vacation rentals nor restrict the duration or frequency of vacation rentals. Rather, they are intended to address life, safety, and compatibility concerns and the secondary effects of vacation rentals located within the city and specifically within residential areas and neighborhoods. It covers a lot of regulations, but importantly, it's... I wanted to address that it's not prohibiting having vacation rentals, but instead regulating them. And that is the intent of the city. And so that's the reason why we're putting this ordinance in front of you, so that you can verify that it's consistent with the COM Plan and the Code of Ordinance, and we can send it for a recommendation for council for approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And as Chair, before we start with the public comments, I'd just like to say this is the first draft of the ordinance put before the planning commission. Usually, these types of ordinance require a lot of discussion, which... anticipating, looking at the audience that we have here, and I really thank all of you for taking your time. We embrace your comments, and this will make this a better ordinance when we have everyone's input. We're not here to try to take away property rights of owners. We encourage, as this town and community, growth and people coming into our community and being a part of our community. So I just appreciate all of you here. And I think before we have the public comments and the audience, Ms. Sid has comments that need to be read into the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, if I could, before Ms. Sid does that, can I just give a little bit of background, too? That might be helpful. This is the first time that this particular ordinance has come before this body, but it's not the first time that it's come up here. We had a prior ordinance that did come to you all for review. There was essentially a bare bones ordinance that had a... Provided for registration. It provided for review of the registration, but it was a short, compact ordinance based on comments we received from the commission, also comments that we received during public comment, and then, I believe, additional remarks that were made at a city council workshop. We were asked to take another look and to do a little bit of a deeper dive on it. So on the first, on the front end, we had a, what you would call a bare bones ordinance. This is a more fulsome ordinance. And so what Ms. Sid said in the beginning is true, and we want to focus on that this ordinance does comply with the statute in the state of Florida that preempts your ability to ban, limit duration or frequency. What it does is it does focus on the life, health, safety issues similar to code enforcement. Many of the things in this ordinance and some of the comments that Ms. Sid will read into the record I reviewed before I came here tonight. And I want to be clear that, except for a handful of them, these are policy items. How many days something should be before you get to register? The number of license tags and the registration, and when those license tag numbers need to be provided to the vacation rental owner. That's policy. That's not legal stuff. You all are the policymakers. So we don't weigh whether that's a good policy or bad policy. That's for the council and for you guys to decide. In terms of whether or not it's legal, whether or not it complies with the law, we can certainly help advise you on it. So there's at least one item that I think we'll talk about that relates to the registration of writing down of license plates that some common sense should probably also be applied to. I can help you with that a little bit. But I'm here for the legal side. The policy stuff is up to you.
Thank you for that clarification and for the audience as well. Thank you. Ms. Sid?
Yes.
So we had several residents that forward and sent their comments through email. One of them is Carol Jornel, Jornell, and I apologize if I am mispronouncing her name. But she has requested for her comments to be read into the record, so I will do that. Dear Planning Commissioners, Darville, Walters, Dunn, Hilton, Pierpont, and Sheffield, I support the proposed ordinance to 2022-05 to better manage short-term rentals and protect our neighborhoods in Dunellen. I am in Blue Cove, an older, quiet, respectful neighborhood that has neighbors that connect and support each other. We have a nightly rental across the canal from us that has gotten better, but at times, the short-term renters have fed the alligators. And when we have explained the dangers of that, including the danger to small children of future renters and young neighbors who would be swimming and playing in the water, the renter proceeded to throw the whole bag of bread into the water for the alligator to eat. We had to call the local owner, who came right away to talk to the renter, but the damage was done. Seems like the majority of the houses that were sold near us have set up as short-term rentals, with one new neighbor in particular buying several houses for this purpose and noted a plan to build another in the double lot at one of the houses purchased. The house next to us is large, 4,200 square feet, and I did see a person who has short-term rentals come with a Realtor. So the fear of a huge house becoming a short-term rental right next door scares me because of the number of cars and people that could be parked into the large property. Part of the paved drive is actually our property used as an easement for the drainage, and I feel these renters will not care if they park on the... That your town person who came to our homeowner's picnic last spring said is to not have any cars parked on it. I am offering my personal experiences, not to protect us alone, but offer the examples as proof that regulations need to help limit this takeover of neighborhoods where neighbors have connections to and respect for each other. The second comment that I will read into the record is from Molly Lucas and Stephen Phelps. They live at 11753 E. Grete Court, and I guess that's one of the property of the vacation rentals, and then the other one is 10615 North Big Bass Trail. They said, "Dear Planning Commissioners, Darville, Walters, Dunn, Hilton, Pierpont, and Sheffield, we are drafting this memo along with other short-term rental owners in Dunellen to voice our concerns about the proposed ordinance on short-term rental vacations. We bought our home on E. Grete Court for ourselves and our family to enjoy. Much like other STR, referred to as short-term rentals, owners in town, we chose to rent the house when we aren't using it to offset our expenses. We tell so. We fell so in love with the Dunellen that we purchased a lot on the Lakushy River on Big Bass Trail and intend to build our forever home. I won't repeat all of the points expressed by fellow STR owner Katie and Brooke Gissy..." Guys. On Palmetto Way. They beautifully summed up the sentiments of many of us, and I will be reading that comment as well later on. She said, "We feel that regulations on short-term rentals are a necessary and very appropriate way to protect the community and hold STR owners to a high level of professionalism and standards. We welcome this particularly since Dunellen will be our full-time residence one day. However, the ordinance as proposed seems to be an extreme set of unnecessary regulations designed to drive away STRs rather than improve them. We fear that the STR community as a whole will be paying the price for a few poorly managed properties. We and most STR owners take a significant amount of pride in our properties. Our properties are well-groomed and well-maintained, often surpassing the condition of those around us. Most of us already have stringent screening processes in place to ensure that we only book guests who intend to be respectful to our homes and our neighbors. We don't cram people in our... Allow folks who intend to hold parties or events to book with us. Most of us have house rules that guests must abide by, and we utilize technologies such as security cameras or noise detection devices to make sure our guests are following these guidelines. In regards to safety, many of us already hold homeowners' insurance policies that require us to meet reasonable standards of safety for both ourselves, our neighbors, and our tenants. These policies require clean four-point inspections and often require annual inspection upon renewal." And many... How did that happen? Bear with me. Give me just a second. "In many cases, this rental policies can be far more stringent than a regular homeowner's policy. Please consider working together with us to revise your ordinance to create reasonable policy which protects the rights of all homeowners in Dunellen. We provide a wonderful housing experience, not just to tourists, but also to friends and family of Dunellen residents. We educate these guests on both laws and etiquette associated with our rivers and parks. We steer these guests toward local restaurants, parks, and retail, and also pay occupancy taxes which boost our local economy. Let's find a way to allow the peaceful, law-abiding, short-term rentals to continue operating successfully and only crack down on the few that have proven to be a nuisance." Thank you so much for listening. And right after that, I received an anonymous comment. It says, "To whom it may concern, this is being written anonymously as it seems that there is some targeting going on with the situation. There are times that we need to rent out our homes, our homes short-term, in order to pay a mortgage. That being said, we cannot run to locals as they destroy and half the time do not pay their rent in a timely fashion. This would put us in financial jeopardy and potentially creating a foreclosure. Thus, we do rent short-term, however, are never informed as to the sexual predator status or anything of that nature. However, I believe hotels, which you have many in the city, also do not ask for a sexual predator status. As to the financial status of the situation, as for the overall security in the area, I would like to attest to that situation. The only time we have had issues with anyone trying to break in or cause property destruction, it has been local residents. As a responsible homeowner, I have cameras and local friends and family to check on my home on a regular basis. Therefore, we cannot control that situation that is a law enforcement matter and has nothing to do with who owns the home and where they are. You can leave your home for an afternoon and get broken into. Also, is there a plan to stop people from using the river? Many who come to enjoy the river are not staying in Dunellen. They just come for the day or the afternoon and leave. How are you controlling those people's criminal background or criminal activity? Really, does this seem that you were targeting a small group in this venture to stop short-term rentals that you have started? Many of us do not have our properties homesteaded. Therefore, the county is getting over 50% higher taxes paid by those who do not leave in the home year-round. Some of us to enjoy our homes as a secondary home. Thus, monetarily, the county and the city are benefiting with our ownership as well. Press the subject, and you will have another economic battle in your hands with people trying to sell their homes. When doing if selling to those who are homesteaded, you will lose much revenue. As for overall revenue, you are also benefiting from those who are vacationing in the area, buying at your local stores and your local restaurants. Florida overall is a travel state. We all benefit much more, much from tourism. Trying to hamper our ability to continue this revenue will only create an economic crisis in your area as it benefits greatly from people who visit the area. Overall, again, I say it seems you are targeting a specific group of owners, of homeowners. I am not opposed to ensuring the people are maintaining their properties and being responsible homeowners. However, some of these regulations that you were trying to put in place seem to be excessive. No hotel knows every single person that stays backgrounds. You also cannot control the people that are using the river and just visiting. How about the people that stay in the campgrounds? How are you controlling that? Again, place your efforts on improving and not hampering economic growth and the enjoyment of the great nature that surrounds us." Anonymous STR owner in Dunellen. With that said, I have another comment from Mr. Robert Stutnikah. His address is 12193 Palmetto Way in Dunellen. And he said, "My name is Robert Stutnikah. I have owned the property at 12193 Palmetto Way since 2019. I have been paying sales and use tax to the state of Florida and to Marion County upon opening my home as an STR since July of 2019. The city of Dunellen should not create positions to enable additional inspections of STRs. This is not a prudent or responsible use of the taxpayers' dollars. I want to let you know how I already addressed many of the issues brought up in this proposal. While there might be complaints from local residents about parking, garbage, noise, et cetera, there have been no complaints filed on my property, and that can be verified by computer-aided dispatch. Instead of punishing every property owner, it would be more efficient to address those one or two problem properties. Every bar in town isn't closed down when one or two get many radio runs for a bar fight or liquor law violations. As a law enforcement officer in my home state with plans to retire here to make this my full-time home, I am also very concerned with safety and security, believe me. It is in my best interest not to allow my property to be rented to guests that will destroy it or otherwise create mayhem for the neighborhood. My listing clearly outlines the rules related to the existence of video/audio security cameras outside entrance and exits, number of guest maximums, no pets, no special events, parties. I insist on a three-night minimum, which results in more families staying here and no wild party one-nighters. Bookings made the day before the check-in date are not allowed. Two-day cleaning time between renters to enable our cleaning service has adequate time to do a thorough cleaning and disinfecting. Number of vehicles parked at the property, dates and times of garbage pickup prominently displayed. Smoke fire detectors, electronic door locks, full-house generator, 24-hour property management local prominently display the location of fire extinguishers, first aid kit, rules of use of the Rainbow River. Have outfitted all kayaks available for use with life jackets, and whistles are required. Quiet hours are not specifically listed, but I do indicate to renters that I appreciate our full-time neighbors and ask that they do the same. Will list specific quiet hours per ordinance. I also provide a CD about the ecology and proper treatment of a river's aquatic life and encourage renters to view it. I don't believe that hotels, banks, stores have to check a sex offender registry for any of their customers and feel this is an unreasonable request. I love this area and appreciate the quiet nature. I myself shop at locally-owned businesses and try to have the small-town feel and ambience of Dunellen. I spend a lot of money for supplies and improvements to the property. I have been coming to the Rainbow River as a guest since 1996, snorkeling and diving in its beautiful waters. I am in favor of responsible standards that provide a great vacation for our guests while respecting the neighborhoods and community." And then we have another comment from Mr. Solomon Cardenas. And he said, "Dear Planning Commissioners, Ms. Darville, Walters, Dunn, Hilton, Pierpont, and Sheffield, I am writing to you to request consideration changes to the proposed ordinance regulating short-term rentals in Dunellen. We have owned the property since 2005. While we understand and agree with the need to balance the impact of vacation rentals on local residents and neighbors, the proposed ordinance is overly burdensome, restrictive, and unreasonable. It would effectively preclude our ability to provide short-term rentals. Some of these provisions are far beyond what the other providers of short-term rentals, like hotels, are required to do and/or what is reasonable expectation for homeowners of single-family homes, therefore appear to be intended to shut down short-term rentals in Dunellen. Specifically, requirements to perform criminal background checks on each person in the group that would be occupying our short-term rentals. Obtaining names, licenses, and vehicle tags for each person in the group in advance of their stay. Certain home improvements such as emergency lighting and a landline telephone. Required to understand and maintain compliance with the City of Dunellen Code of Ordinance and Property Maintenance Codes, Florida Building Code, Florida Fire Prevention Code. We have vested long-term interest in Dunellen, especially the health and safety of Rainbow River. We want to do the right thing by all stakeholders, STR owners, permanent residents, guests, local businesses, and the city. While we are opposed to the ordinance language as drafted, we are open and will agree and comply with reasonable standards to address the negative impacts that some full-time residents are experiencing while keeping the short-term rentals viable in Dunellen." There are many negative consequences of the proposed ordinance as drafted. By effectively shutting down short-term rentals, tourism would be significantly reduced, which would reduce the uh revenues of local restaurants, grocery and leisure uh business directly. Local economy would be impacted further by jobs being reduced. Housekeeping services, pest control, lawn services, home repair, et cetera. Sales and county tax revenues would be reduced, both from S T R owners' payments and tourism sales taxes. There would be a significant cost to the city to develop new pro- processes and procedures to administer the registration inspection of rentals. Property values and thus property tax revenues would decline significantly without without the potential for rental income. Finally, there may be cost of legal action as the nature of the regulations are so restrictive. It is not within the spirit of the state law which preempts cities from banning short-term rentals. I believe we can find a good place to meet in the middle. I've come compromise, a compromised position would be able to put reasonable standards in place and means to address non-compliance without introducing heavy process administrative red tape. Let's work together to address the extreme cases without punishing all S T R owners and local businesses and avoid a costly new process for the city to manage. I agree with the proposed modification in the redlined version of the file. Uh, guess, uh guys, uh red line edits or D twenty twenty-two oh five, which I will show you in a minute. And I am attaching it here as a way to make known our proposed modification. Thank you for your consideration of the proposed modification. I look forward to hearing back from you on next steps. Respectfully, Mr. Solomon Cardenas. Um, and they, they have provided uh red, red line uh corrections to the ordinance, which I will show you in a minute. Um, Ms. Katie and uh Brooke, uh got guys?
Yeah, guys. Brock and Katie guys.
Yes, so uh they also provided comments um to that respect. They're very similar to the prior comments I just read. Uh, they own the property at one two two oh five Palmetto Way. And uh they wrote, they wrote as follows. I am writing to you to request a collaboration to negotiate uh the proposed ordinance regulating short-term rentals um in Denali. After visiting Denali for over twenty years, my husband and I brought our dream retirement home on one two two oh five Palmetto Way in twenty seventeen. We live and work full-time in Tampa with two teenagers and come to Denali every three to we eagerly await for the day we can retire and be a full-time resident. Until then, we have opened our home as a short-term rental. As you all know, the Rainbow River is a special place that is hard to describe, but our guests express their admiration over and over. It brings so much joy, relaxation and connection with the nature and family bonding time to our guests who come back again and again. While we understand and agree with the need to balance the impact of vacation rentals on neighbors, the proposed ordinance is overly burdensome, restrictive and unreasonable. It would effectively preclude our ability to provide short-term rentals. Some of the provisions are far beyond what the hotels are required to do and are what is reasonable expectation for homeowners, single-family homes. Therefore, appear to be intended to shut down short-term rentals in Denali specifically. And she um lists the same specific um requirements. If you want, I can read them or, I mean, it's the same exact requirements I just read in the prior comment. Um, so she said, we have a vested long-term interest in Denali, especially the health and safety of the Rainbow River. We want to do the right thing by all stakeholders. S T R owners, permanent residents, guests, local businesses and the city. While we are opposed to the ordinance language as drafted, we are off, we are open to reasonable standards to address the negative impacts that some full-time residents are experiencing while keeping short-term rentals viable in Denali. There are many negative consequences of the proposed ordinance as drafted. Um. By effectively shutting down short-term rentals, tourism would be significantly reduced, which would reduce the revenue of local restaurants, grocery and leisure businesses directly. And that, and that lists basically the same as the prior comment. Uh, she says, I believe we can find a good place to meet in the middle. I, a compromised position would be able to put reasonable standards in place and means to address non-compliance with introducing heavy process and administrative red tape. Let's work together to address the extreme cases without punishing all S T Rs owners and local businesses and avoid a costly new process for the city to manage. Please see my proposed modification in redlined version of the file. I would be happy to work with the planning commission to fellow or fellow Denali residents to achieve an outcome that is workable for all. Thank you for your consideration and proposed modification. I look forward to hearing back from you on next steps. Respectfully, Katie and Buck, uh, yes, guys. And then I have another comment from Mr. Matt Wandler. Uh, Mr. Matt Wandler, uh, his address is two zero zero three zero East Pennsylvania Avenue. And it goes as follows. I met you all last October when I interviewed for the C D M position with the city. I have been going through a lot of life transition at the moment and have been unable to dedicate the time needed to properly respond to this proposed regulations for short-term rentals in Denali. I intended on attending council tonight, but uh become, became very ill, so please accept this email as my comments. In the future, I plan to be more involved. I own two zero zero three zero East Pennsylvania Avenue and another property outside city limits. Both operate as full-time uh vacation rentals. Both are registered with the county and state and op- and operate illegally. Because of S T R, I am able to keep this Penn Avenue home residential and not tear it down for another strip mall like the Lab Carp Nick Corp uh next door. Do you want all of Penn Avenue to be strip malls or maintain its quant, quant, quant uh residential charm? My impression is this effort to regulate S T Rs was started by David Porter, a resident in Blue Cove. And he hired an attorney to make operating vacation rentals virtually impossible. I would suggest to counsel that not all residents of Denali live in Blue Cove and they should consider the voices and interests of the entire community. The city should not be manipulated into acting as an H O A for Blue Cove since they did not regulate when they could have. Some of these points I have heard mentioned in the ordinance are disrupting peace parties, uh parking noise, et cetera. Since twenty twenty, we have yet to have a single police call at two zero zero thirty uh East Pennsylvania Avenue. Our guests have been great. The neighbors love us because we fixed up a distressed long-term rental that had been neglected for years. The comment that S T R properties lower property values is ridiculous. I have multiple zombie house flips I have done personally and was able to make the investment because of the cash flow that S T R provides. I have sold come uh some four hundreds of thousands above comp uh value due to the cash flow. If anything, S T R properties clearly raise property values as they are highly maintained, beautiful homes that improve neighborhoods. S T R is a form of housing. I have housed pe- multiple people moving to the area and helped them find a home. Also, people need a place to live if they are remodeling a property or building a home. S T R is a form of housing and should be respected as such. I just purchased a zombie house at one two zero nine four Palmetto Way in the Granada neighborhood. It has for years been an eyesore and no noter notorious drug pad. Should I just leave it in its dilapidated state? What incentive do I have to invest my energy and resources into something with no return on, on the backside? Requiring S T R property owners, property owners to ask every guest if they are a sexual predator, register their license plates and get a background check? These are not the responsibility of S T R owners. Sexual predators are required to self-report. People will not want to come to a town for vacation where their privacy is being violated, especially regarding background report. These kind of regulations are overly burdensome to S T R owners with the intent of stopping us from operating in town completely. We have a right by the state of Florida to operate a C R and will, and we will defend those rights. These regulations are virtually impossible for us to implement. Most guests will not want to provide this information, even license plates. It is of uh overly burdensome and not realistic. Oc- occupancy per bedroom is too strict. Having an air mattress or two or couch available for some extra guests is not unreasonable. We have had no issues with guests or neighbor complaints. Plus, kids can share beds and should not be counted in, in the occupancy. I think it is inappropriate for the city to be regulating how many people sleep at a property. It is none of your business. An alternative would be to regulate how many cars per house, since that seems to be the main complaint, complaint. The main complaint is too many cars, like one car per bedroom as an example. We provide adequate fire extinguishers, wired spo- smoke and uh and C O alarms. To ask us to mark a lit uh path to exit for a two-bedroom home is ridiculous. We are not a large commercial hotel building. If Denali wants to continue to be the to a tourism destination for a beautiful tween river attraction, the city needs to embrace S T R properties. They provide an economic benefit also for local businesses. The one nice hotel we have in town alone cannot accommodate all the tourists that flock here. I have heard the council talk about distressed properties in town and wanting to, wanting them clean up. Um, regulating S T R in Denali would be taking a step to keep these properties distressed. This is such a serious subject that I can guarantee if the city passes regulations that are overly burdensome to S T R property owners that make our lawful right to operate virtually impossible, this is, this will not end here. You can expect litigation if needed from the S T R owners in town. Sincerely, Matt Wendler. And um, one more comment from uh Ms. R. Paula DePaula. And she says, I have lived within the city limits of Denali since two twenty sixteen on K- week circle and was raised in Inverness since the seventies. I wish I was able to attend the July nineteenth meeting, but I am out of uh the state on vacation. Regarding the new ordinance recently drawn up for short-term rentals, I feel this was rushed without much input from short-term rental owners and more from home, homesteaded owners. As safe as it may seem to add background checks on our guests, are you asking that of the hotel motels that are bo- that border on residential areas off of Pennsylvania Avenue two? This will be a tedious and costly procedure. I have done short-term rentals myself and include a booklet explaining quite ti- quiet time tales and to be con- cognizant of neighbors. Since twenty twenty, I have never had a problem as a screen, as I screen my guests pretty good before they arrive. Uh, the software used to find short-term rentals usually shows past ratings of guests as well. Guests wanted uh want good referrals, which usually results in good behavior. I have temporarily stopped short-term rental of my property, but I speak for those that still do. There are approximately four um of these properties within one or two houses of my house. Um, I may hear the occasional laughter and splashing in the river, but I have never had to call any of the owners to ask them to remove their guests or to settle down. Every time a short-term rental is rented fro- for a weekend, you can be sure money is to be spent three times the amount than if someone lived there because the, these vacation, vacationers are here to explore, purchase and rent. Keeping the homes occupied also cuts down on vac- on vacant home burglaries. I asked the council not to vote on any of these regulations until we can com- we can form a special meeting with owners of short-term rentals. I repeat, I feel this was put together without enough input from them. This topic seems to have pieced together with other ordinances and truly is not cognizant to this area as it should be. Thank you for your time and please give short-term rental owners more time to meet with each other and or with the council to discuss these proposed ordinance before they are voted on. Thank you, R. Paula DePaula. And I have Mr. Roy uh Bitterman, and I hope I'm not mispronouncing your name. He is on Zoom. And he sent his um, his comments uh to be read into the record. I don't know if he wishes to um, to comment, but I, I have a hand raised. So if you give me just one second. Mr. Bitterman?
Yeah, it's uh, call me Roy. Um, you can just, um, you can just read the email. I mean, um, I kind of agree with a lot of the same sentiments with the uh, the burden of the background checks and um just the fact I worked hard on the house to try to, you know, make the neighborhood nice. I use it myself. Um, and I just loved on Ellen. Uh, but you can read the email. I appreciate you recognizing me.
Thank you. Well done. And so he says, um, as an owner of the house in Denali, I have worked hard to create an amazing property in character with the mining history of Denali. Working with the historical board, I believe the house bring charm and style to Power Road. I use this house as my personal vacation spot and to visit family and friends in the area. And although the house is zoned R B O, some of the proposed amendments create a severe burden on vacation rental owners that hotels do not have. Background checks require time and money to complete and permissions from the guests. Hotels only require these checks on employees in Florida, not on guests. And in the age of modern technology, requiring a landline phone creates an extra monthly expense. We live in the age of cell phones. The lengthy code would be some of the str- strictest in the county. I do agree with uh smoke detectors, fire extinguishers and informing guests of local rules and regulations. Uh, these rentals should be grandfathered in and new rentals kept to R B O and commercial areas. Guest of vacation rental spent money on food at local restaurants contribute to the overall tax base of Florida. Buy and shop at local antique and garden stores, creating a steady stream of cash flow into Denali. Money collected by the state and local rivers parks is spent on conversa- on conversation. Let's keep guests coming to Denali for vacation and create a modern boom for the people who live here. Sincerely, Roy Bitterman. And that concludes um the comments that I, that I was to read in the, to the record.
Thank you. I'm encouraged by people's response and participation. So at this time, um, the members of our audience can make their comments. Um, we typically have a three-minute uh rule for a comment, but um, I will waive that as long as you're but I will waive that as long as your comments are succinct and, but we do want to hear from you. So please, when you go to the podium, give us your name and your address before you make your comments. So please feel free to come up.
Sure, woman. I'm sorry. I, I do have Mr. Robert Stucknica, who has our hand raised on Zoom.
All right.
So.
We'll take that comment next.
Mr. Robert, are you there?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. I did not mean to, to have a comment. My email was succinct enough.
You can tell me, you already read my letter.
You wish to say anything else?
Just that you already read that one.
I believe you said his email was enough.
Okay. I, I didn't hear.
All right. As I said, we'll take comments from the audience, please. Yes, please. Uh, I haven't seen the sign-up sheet. Do we have a sign-up sheet?
Thank you. Julianne Mendonza, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. I'll speak a little bit to some of the secondary effects. At the beginning, Georgina said that a lot of the ordinance speaks to secondary effects of people who live here. I want to start by thanking the city for not rushing into this. This is the very first meeting that we are reviewing a draft of the ordinance. And I think that we all realize that there's going to be compromise on each side. So I really heard the city's rushing into this. They're not inviting the short-term owners. And I guess I would just say that I disagree with that and I'm, I'm happy that we're taking it one step at a time so that we can have a conversation about it. I reside in a single-family home in the Blue Cove. And I reside in that single-family home as my sole investment because that's what my family can afford. I don't have a second home. I don't have anywhere that I go on vacation. I just stick by my home in the Blue Cove. I do stand in support of ordinance 202205 as drafted. Our communities are being inundated with vacation rentals. The lack of any parameters placed around the practice of renting out rental home, of renting out residential homes to date must be corrected. All over the state of Florida, cities have ordinances just like the one proposed before you today. There's nothing contained in this ordinance that's not being enforced in other cities in Florida. Any for-profit business requires business owners to take responsibility, pay taxes, adhere to rules, and maintain safety standards as not to put others at risk. So for those who suggest that this is one-sided, prohibitive, burdensome and unreasonable, I would ask that you consider those of us living next to your money makers. The cars, trucks, motorcycles and RVs roll in towing trailers with boats and jet skis. And when the driveways of these homes begin to overflow, additional vehicles start parking in the grass and on the easements. Several weeks ago, I found that my privately, that my privately owned vacant lot was being used without permission for overflow parking from a rental a block away that had a total of 12 vehicles. Dogs are on the loose without leashes, making me think twice about the safety of my own dog, who is leashed on my private property. The mood of the neighborhood where I enjoy walking, biking and visiting with my neighbors now feels completely different. Blue Cove had a rash of car break-ins following one recent weekend where a single-family home had 15 guests partying through the weekend. And when police came to the area the next day looking for evidence, it was a reminder that our neighborhoods are becoming less safe. I witnessed traffic in the Blue Cove backed up at the check-in and checkout times as the guests wait for the place to be cleaned from the last VRBO guest. It's unsettling to see different unfamiliar faces in your backyard every day. And for those with small children, it's a whole different kind of concern. Short-term rental owners will deny, some short-term rental owners will deny that any, that any of this applies to their rentals. And if that's the case, I applaud you. If you indeed are managing your rental in such a way that it blends in with the surrounding neighborhood and is not burdensome to those of us who live in the neighborhood, then you're already well on your way to being in compliance with the proposed ordinance. If it's just a handful of short-term owners who are creating issues, then let's work together, compromise, pass the ordinance, and it will be in place for all of the people who come in the future. So thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Next person is Megan Phillips.
Hi, I'm Megan Phillips. I own a short-term rental on Palmetto Way.
We need your address, please.
Oh, 12055 Palmetto Way. I, I know that there's been a lot of points that are similar to my beliefs, but I have a little bit of a unique story that I just wanted to share. My parents purchased this home when I was in high school, a little over 14 years ago. And I grew up coming here. We live two hours away. I drove two hours to be here tonight. My parents became terminally ill and could not maintain, excuse me, could not maintain their property. My mom wanted to keep it in the family for generations. I have three children that are young. And so during the time that my parents were sick, they let the house fall into disrepair. It was not being mowed or maintained. We had raccoons living in it and settling issues and significant, significant concerns. It was very unsightly and obviously a concern for our neighbors. We have amazing neighbors who live there year-round, who we love next door to us, who helped out and mowed the lawn for them when they couldn't. And then last year, my husband and I were told that my parents were going to have to sell their house and we would not be able to enjoy our time at the Rainbow River with our children and, thank you. Um, something that had been my mother's dream. And so my husband and I, we don't have a lot of money. We couldn't afford to pay for the full value of their property. Certainly not what they could have sold it for. But we worked out a deal with them where we would pay for 50% of the value and manage the short-term rental and allow them to collect 50% of the profits. And so that was ongoing. They would, you know, receive 50% of the profits and we took out a mortgage for half of the value of the property to basically split the costs. We invested a substantial amount into the property. We completely repaired it. We repainted it. We rehabilitated it so that it is now beautiful and clean and, you know, not, not an eyesore like it was before. And so we launched our property in February of this year. And so obviously, these ordinances are, you know, burdensome and concerning to us for a lot of reasons. I understand that, you know, the Florida law is such that, you know, you are not able to prohibit short-term rentals, but excessive ordinances would surely prohibit renters like, or short-term rental owners like us from, from maintaining them. And like many of the people that have spoken before have said, you know, my concern is not that you want to make sure that everything is to code, that everything is safe. We have ample parking. We have a very large circular driveway and carport. We have not had any issues. We don't allow parties. You know, we're responsible short-term rental owners. We haven't had any complaints. So my concern personally is not that, you know, regulations for safety or for the community is an issue. But I think, as many have said, the excessive regulations around background checks that would just be prohibitive in terms of both logistics and finances are a concern. So I think some of those things, you know, I would definitely, you know, hope that we could get those out of the, the ordinance. And, and again, some of the other items that, you know, relate to smoke detectors and making sure that there's exits and a window in every room and, and things like that are certainly not a concern at all. I know that there were some complaints about people feeding alligators. And, you know, I just want to speak to that comment directly. That's obviously illegal. Not only is it unsafe, but it's illegal. You know, it's not the short-term rental ordinance job to regulate, you know, the laws for feeding alligators or doing illegal activities on property, regardless of where that property is. And lastly, I live in Lakeland. As I said, we're about two hours away from here. I have a short-term rental in Lakeland as well, and I live next to a short-term rental in Lakeland. So I am very familiar and I fully understand what a lot of the people are saying about their concerns about living next to a short-term rental owner. And what I can tell you is that from personal experience, both with my property here as well as properties that I live next to in the city of Lakeland, responsible short-term rental owners are by far the majority. I know that there are some concerns and I believe that, you know, we should do everything we can to address the people that are being irresponsible with, you know, their ownership. But I think that we should, we should remember that there are more responsible short-term rental owners than not. And I think that, you know, the, the beautification of those houses and what is required for a short-term rental owner to maintain a short-term rental is substantial. And so if you go by my house now, it's, it's beautiful. You know, it's, it's, it, you know, matches the blue of the river. The door matches the blue of the river and it's, you know, in great shape. So I just hope that people realize that we're not all, you know, investors coming in to take over and not care about our neighbors because we do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments.
Next, next person is Ms. Amber Serena.
Amber Serena, 11426 Southwest Hendrick's Drive. So I've had my vacation rental since 2013. Most of my guests are repeat customers. They come back year after year with their families, watch their kids grow up. Most, almost all of them I know personally now. Out of the nine years I've been renting this home, I've not had one police call. And I've had one complaint from my neighbor in nine years and I was there immediately to take care of it. I have a three-night minimum. I spent a lot of money as when, you know, when I bought my home, it was a major disrepair. I spent so much money that I couldn't afford to live in it. So I decided in order to keep it for my daughter and I, single mom at the time, that that was my only way to be able to keep my home on the river. So I, I'm a little bit concerned about a letter that was read at the workshop by Kathy Dunn, where it, she's two doors down from me, that says that my home is rented 365 days a year. It's absolutely not. January and February, it's barely rented and that's when my family and I can do our repairs, hang out there and enjoy the river. It also says that it's used, she stated that it's used for events for large numbers of people. I've only had five events in the past nine years, five weddings. And says that they park along Hendrick's Drive and it leaves muddy roadside. That is not true. Just recently, since the Dunn's have purchased or built a new home and brought in lots of filter, now the water.
Excuse me. I'd like to raise this up from a personal level.
Okay. Well, I mean, this feels very personal to me.
I understood.
Okay. So just because it does.
Voice your main concerns, please.
Well, my concern is that I, I feel that I, there has been almost a personal vendetta put against me by someone on the planning commission. And I feel like she should recuse herself from any ordinance being written. And I also feel that, you know, building things without permits by someone on a planning commission probably should relinquish their seat. So I'll just leave it there.
That can be taken under advisement of legal counsel, but please.
So I just, I really feel that we're not getting a fair shake here. Things are being really blown out of proportion. And I do think it's time that we lawyer up here and start spending the taxpayers' money. Thank you. Next, anyone else on the list?
Next person is Ms. Paula Colgan.
Hi, I'm Paula Colgan. I live at 11983 Palmetto Way in Dunellen. And I'm interested as I listen, I don't have a copy of the, what's suggested. I didn't know that was needed before I came. And as I listen to this, there's only one thing that really stands out for me. And that is the need, I, my neighbor in the community is planning to sell two of his houses to a person who specializes in renting to, as BB and whatever it is. And my concern is that to restrict the number of houses in each community that are sold as that, like if you have a house, two houses on a street, you can't sell anymore. And, and so it's, it seems like the possibility here that's really dangerous is that this community becomes an investment capital for RB&amp;B buyers that want to capitalize on this beautiful, sane river and turn it into a completely insane place where there are large numbers of people doing things that aren't going to contribute to the value of this community. Does that say?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate your comment.
Mr. Colgan.
My name is David Colgan. I live at 11983 Palmetto Way. You know, I think there's a, some more discussion and meeting needs to be held on this issue. From the renter's standpoint, I can see that asking them to force all their prospective renters to do, submit to a background check, that might not be necessarily reasonable. If it is reasonable, then why aren't we doing that to the local hotels? On the other hand, if somebody comes here and buys a single-family house in a single, in a residential neighborhood, they should be entitled to live in a single-family residential neighborhood, not in a business community. These RB&amp;Bs are businesses. Don't anybody kid you. They've, you've, you've heard it from their own, they, they are doing to make money. If you want to make money someplace, go invest in something, right? If you want to live in a house in a residential neighborhood with a family orientation, find one of those. Now, the state has made a decision that you can rent your house whenever you want. That might be illegal too. You know, the, the state also has zoning and planning commissions that are supposed to lay out what's business, what's residential. I think it's perfectly appropriate for the city of Dunellen to put a limit on the number of vacation rental houses in a residential neighborhood. And I think we had, need to have a lot more discussion on this. I understand people want to see Dunellen grow. My primary purpose is to protect the river. I live on the river and I see what's happening. You know, when we moved here, I, I grew up in Gainesville. I learned how to barefoot water ski on this river when I was a kid. And forgive me for doing that. Now that I know how sensitive the river is, I would have never done that. But we are destroying the river with the amount of traffic we are putting on it. Just when we first moved here in 2010, I could name five families of otters that I used to see on a weekly basis. Now I'm lucky if I see one a week.
Excuse me. We, we appreciate that, but if we could stick to the topic.
If stick to the topic is that we need to have further discussions on this. And I think it's a good idea to look at this ordinance a little deeper. And I would like to see a limitation on the number of rentals allowed in residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Walter.
My name is Walter Johnson. I live at 12151 Palmetto Way. I'm a 30-year resident, so I've seen a lot of change on the river. And I agree with what he just said. It is, the river is getting deluged with all these motorized. aircraft. And I've already started to come up with the name of the end of the rainbow. It's going to be the end of the rainbow. You know, a lot of people that are getting these short-term rentals, it's their rainbow, the, the cash or the bucket of gold at the end of the rainbow. Well, there's another way to look at the end of the rainbow. My main concern is that this, when we moved in, it was signal, single-family dwellings. And like the man said, you're making it business, single-family a business, single-family a business. One of the owners is even talking about expanding his house so it can hold more people. There's something basically wrong with that, that you can go into a single-family dwelling neighborhood and beef up the house. I've, I'll start taking pictures if I need to. I've seen as many as seven and eight cars overnight, not weekend guests, but overnight in the house, in the morning or in the evening. There's something really wrong with that. Somebody's not paying attention. You need enforcement. There ought to, there has to be a number that you can call and say, drive by this address in the middle of the night and there's eight cars parked there. Something's wrong with that. I don't care how, I've heard all these other testimonials that came out, but we see a lot when we live on the river. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last person is Ms. Nancy Myers.
I'm Nancy Myers from 10925 Southwest 186th Circle Dunellen. I'm kind of glad I don't live in town with all this going on. I've lived here a long time, lived here 59 years or something like that. I've seen some changes with the river. I tend to believe that it has more to do with the agriculture surrounding the river or surrounding our territory or our town, but decreases the health of the river. Impact from cows and fertilizers, everybody that loves to have their lovely green lawn along the river. I think you're doing harm to the river by fertilizing it and having it run off into the river. So there's lots of little blame to go around and we're not here to be ugly to each other. We need to remember this is Dunellen and we love each other. And I think like this gentleman said, we need to have a lot more discussion and come up with what is going to work for everyone. I personally have done kind of short-term, just winter rental for my sister's house in Blue Cove for the past couple of years because she doesn't live in it anymore. She lives in Ocala, but she loves Dunellen and she likes to come over and swim down the river or ride her bike or whatever. And she doesn't want to go to her house. And the, the families that we've had have become like family to us. They have made improvements to the home. They've planted plants, basil and tomatoes, and they've rescreened, they, whatever they've done, they've made improvements and they've made neighborhood and they, they've been a blessing. That's been my only experience. But I hope we will have a lot more discussion before, you know, I, and, and I hear, you know, people saying, well, this is all business. Well, I also understand that a lot of it is, is business that's allowing people to hold on to their family homes, which is important too. We all know that things cost more money these days and this is a gig economy that is happening all over our nation. And we have never done short-term rental other than those two winters or three winters. But we have stayed in Airbnbs and VRBOs for probably 12 or 15 years, something like that. And so we've, we've always been the guest, not the, you know, not the, and we've, we've rented bedrooms in people's homes or we've rented the whole house. And we've always had positive experiences and kind of feel like we have friends all over the nation because of it. And so I understand that there are problems, but I'm, I'm floored that it's something that we can't solve because we, we see it from a positive aspect and, and I typically don't like staying in a hotel. If I can stay in somebody's warm cozy home that has a lot more flavor and personality and sometimes if the host lives there, you, you pretty much end up making a new friend. You don't have to have contact with them if you don't want to, but we, we found it to be an enriching experience. And so I hope we can, I hope we can get rid of the things that aren't appealing. We can learn, we can figure out a way to control those, but we can also embrace some short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, I would like to point out the recommendations that were given by Ms. Geissi.
By, pardon me?
The recommendations that I referred to in the comments before for the ordinance.
And if you can- Are there any more comments though that need to be made by the audience? Can they finish?
There are no comments, no more comments. Oh, you have a comment?
Ms. Porter, I have a comment, yes.
Yeah, he didn't. I didn't have anybody else in the list. Apologize.
I'm Dave Porter. Live at 11835 East Blue Cove Drive. And I'm like Ms. Myers, I've lived here most of all my life. I'm very familiar with the ordinance that, that the staffs put together. And, and I know it's an emotional issue. It's an emotional issue with almost every city that deals with short-term rentals. It's an emotional issue with the state legislature every year. Dunellen is a little bit behind the curve on other cities. So the state legislature passed a law in 2011 that said that that you can't regulate short-term rentals and you can't stop from, in Florida. And in 2014, they revised that to say that you could regulate them, you can't prevent them. So you, you can't, the city, I don't think, and and, you know, our legal expert can, can back this up, but I don't think you can limit how many are in a neighborhood or zoning area or anything like that. So you can't legally do that. So, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that. I think that I would also like to clarify that that ordinance does not require background checks on people. It requires a verification that they're not a sexual offender. That's a very, very, very different thing. And why is that important? Well, many, many comments were made that the short-term rentals are, are being singled out. The hotels don't have to do a verification of sexual offenders. And that's because hotels are in a commercial district. Okay, so if I have a child, I have grandchildren, I don't let them run free around the hotel. It's very, very different in placing a short-term rental in a residential neighborhood. I should be able to have my grandchildren run around my yard and not have to worry about what, who's next door. Dunellen's very small. So there's a state statute that says that a sexual offender cannot stay in an area that's 2,500 feet from a park or an area where children gather, stuff like that. There's no area in Dunellen because we have so many parks that's outside that boundary. Sexual offenders have to, have to notify the Marion County Sheriff's Department if they're going to be in an area for more than three days. But short-term rentals can have somebody for one day. So that's why many, many cities in Florida require that if, that you do a check, not a background check, but a check if these people are sexual offenders. There's a big, big difference. It's a computer check versus a background check, okay? So it's not expensive. It's a check. So to check people to make sure that they're sexual offenders or not, you need to know their names, their ages and their addresses. Right? And it's all kind of designed because we're electing to have these businesses placed right in the middle of residential neighborhoods. So, so I can understand emotion about people that, man, this is hard and I got to do these kind of things. But it's kind of, it's designed to make short-term rentals almost invisible to the other neighbors. That's what it should be. It should be just like if somebody else owning a home. And if you, if the, if the home of the short-term rental owners are doing the right job, and many of them mention that they've have good tenants and nobody complains like that. There's also a different threshold. Neighborhoods tend to look out for each other. That's what neighborhoods do. You know each other. You kind of check on your neighbors, that kind of stuff. So you're kind of used to working together. When you put short-term rentals in a residential neighborhood, we're not used to complaining. We used to like working it out with your neighbor. So if you've got problems, you normally work it out. So by basing how good you are by how many police calls is not a very good criteria. That's not a good criteria at all. It would have to be really egregious for me to call the police. And in fact, that initiates the problem. So obviously we've got a lot of short-term rentals in Dunellen because we've heard from them. But you don't necessarily know who's the owner of a short-term rental or where they are. They may not be in the United States. You may not be able to call them. You may not know who manages it. And it's really not the homeowner, next-door neighbor's responsibility to kind of monitor things. So if the host is not there or available all the time, then you're kind of depending on the people renting to, to be monitored by the neighbors. That's not our job. You know, it's not our job to make sure that they're not feeding alligators and stuff like that. And there's many other things. I mean, examples of, of people driving golf balls across the river to try to hit the great, the big rigs across the river. There's all kinds of silly stuff that happens. So, so the, the, the regulations or the ordinance that's provided is to set guidelines for both the homeowners in the area and, and the people that's doing short-term rentals to make sure that there is a balance between the neighborhood and the businesses. And so, so you have to remember that you can't necessarily compare them to hotels because hotels are in a commercial district. They have frequent inspections. They have a lot of requirements. They have requirements that you have a lighted exit sign and you have smoke detectors and that kind of stuff. So, so the regulation or the ordinance that's presented to you is, is almost verbatim in many cities enacted in Florida today. So this is nothing that is kind of made up. And it's a false narrative or a false choice to say if you put these, this ordinance out, then it's going to put everybody out of business. Because there's many cities that have these regulations right now and they thrive. It is different. I understand it's emotional because we've gone since 2018, 2017 without any regulations. So, oh my God, it's kind of like a, a blue suit you're putting on. It's going to be a little bit different. And the city is going to have to work and kind of figure out how to, how to implement it and everybody work together. But it, it is, is not onerous because it's, many cities utilize these exact words. So, so I would encourage you to, to consider this ordinance. And if the, if other short-term rental owners have input on very specific things, then provide the exact item that they have problems with and work together and change it. But, but it doesn't necessarily have to mean that we throw up our hands and say that all the houses that they're fixing up to make nice to rent is going to decay. And we're not going to have any tax money for the city. Those are really kind of Dunellen's been here for a long time. It's been a nice city. And we can support visitors coming and staying in homes that's homely and feel good and have good family experiences and come back again and utilize our business, our local businesses. But it doesn't have to be 10, 12 cars and a car in all of the front yard. It, it can be controlled and people can make money on it. Maybe not as much as allowing 20 people in a house, but you can get a good return on your dollar and still allow neighborhoods to thrive in the essence of what they are, which is kind of feeling safe, feeling well-kept. And those people that are the homeowners also are the roots of our city. They provide input to the government. They go to church and they do business with our local businesses all year long. All of our businesses. Tourists don't use these hardware a lot. You know, they don't use our legal services a lot, but the residents do. So we have to have a blend for both. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Anyone else would like to comment this time? You, you need to come to the podium for your comments, please. And your name and address one more time.
Yep, Meg Phillips, 12055 Palmetto Way. I just wanted to clarify that in the current ordinance as drafted, starting at, at line, I guess it's line 468. It says rental owner or responsible party shall inquire if any vacation rental occupant is a sexual offender as defined by state law, as well as conduct a criminal background on all prospective occupants and guests over the age of 18 years. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think that was one of the issues, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? This time? All right, I believe Ms. said you wanted to, here, here's my thought. This is a lengthy meeting. This is the first time we've seen this as a draft. So what I would propose, and I would like to commission your thoughts, is we go over the comments that you want to read that Katie Geis had suggested, and that would be a start. And then I think that we should defer this to a meeting to a date and time certain so that we can really go in line by line and address those issues that, you know, is causing the most angst among our citizens here. Because, you know, we have to, and as, as Mr. Porter so eloquently pointed out and, and Ms. Myers pointed out, we have to have a balanced approach. We, we've got to be restrictive enough to encourage the behavior, but we have to have reasonable compliance. And that's all that we're after. And, but we've had to address it because it's evident this has become a problem. And that's why I keep stressing draft of the, the ordinance was written. So we don't have to resort to anything that is so extreme that it would be overly burdensome on our citizens and on those owners. So that would be my suggestion of that we continue with the comments that Ms. Geis has so that the public can be aware of some suggestions that have been made. And that we would defer this portion of the meeting to date and time certain so that we can really get in there and do justice. The council always has a full plate and when we recommend something to go to them, I would like to know that we have spent adequate amount of time to properly vet this where we're comfortable with it, where our citizens are comfortable before it goes to the next step to go before council. So I would like comments to that. So I would like comments to that.
We're referring to this document from Ms. Geis. Well, Ms. Geis wrote a letter, but she also had taken the, the, the ordinance itself and had made some comments regarding certain portions of the ordinance that were lined out. Yes.
My comment is that I feel like a lot of the points that the audience and the commenters, the renter, the rental owners have, they're already doing a lot of these things. And the salient points that they are arguing or wanting to strike out, it would be good for us to meet and go line by line. I totally agree.
Thank you. Okay, and Sheffield?
I've just been sitting here thinking about all the comments that we've heard, neighbors, people in the city that we know. I live at 12001 Palmetto Way, so I'm right in the midst of a lot of the stuff that's going on. And I feel very strongly like we have to have the balance you're talking about. Because I see people on Palmetto Way that have very, very nice short-term rentals. And we see the, the kids walking down the street, going to the park or the beach and, and that kind of a feeling is good. And if we can have, if we can have a place where we encourage people to come and bring their children for vacations or to spend a part of the summer or whatever, I think if we can provide that kind of an atmosphere without penalizing the people who are not able to do this normally because they don't have the resources or whatever, I think we need to work together so that we can find a way that everybody can benefit from this. I don't want us to see, us, I've been here 35 years and I don't want us to be so centered on ourselves that we are trying to keep other people out. And so we, we want this balance again. So I think we need to definitely spend some time on this and look at, look at everything so that we make sure that we're not putting too much of a burden on any one person, one type of person.
Thank you for that. And just for full disclosure, you've heard the name a couple of times and this is what Ms. Sid will be reading additional comments from the Geises. I have met Brock Geis several years ago and he is in upper management in, in St. Petersburg in the firm that I'm affiliated with in my profession. And last week, Mr. Ms. Geis reached out to me and asked for a, a brief conference. So we had a Zoom meeting and expressing their concerns and wanted to know how to go about getting their concerns heard. And I directed them to contact Ms. Sid, and that's how Ms. Sid was able to address these issues. So when people with those kind of busy schedules are willing to take their time, and she's put a lot of time and effort in this, and I really appreciate the fact that, that they did this and all of you for your time, your comments. You drove, what, a couple of hours even to attend this meeting? So we very, very much appreciate that and we're taking all of that into consideration. And as I would keep stressing, this is only a draft. Though, we'll, we're going to have separate meeting, possibly several meetings before this even gets for council to review. And council will put in their time and due diligence and we'll come up with something hopefully that's in the best interest of, of everyone here in the city. So, Ms. Sid?
Thank you. So this is, this, the ordinance, uh, first page. She had some comments on page, section 154.
I'm not sure that's her comment.
That was page five, I'm sorry. Page five.
Yeah, staff needs to make copies of it, Bill. I think another member of the public said they didn't have a copy of the ordinance and it was oral, but just treat it as a public records request and get it for.
So this section here, line 197, 198, and 199, she made comments that say that, it says, "Within 120 days of enactment of the ordinance and registration process and procedures available." She commented to that, said sufficient time should be provided for the city to develop the registration process and procedures.
Ms. Sid, if I could, to, to be clear, which the, her, the words that are underlined and red are what she, her proposal to add. The, as drafted, the, the registration deadline that's proposed is January 1st of 2023. She thought 100, she was recommending 120 days instead and she gave her reasons for that.
And then her next comment is on 202, 203, lines 202 and 203. She has stricken a section there and she said, "What value does a notary have in this example?" Because it refers to the registration, having, having the registration being, the form being notarized. And then there's another comment right beneath that. It says, "The registration and renewal fee should go toward proving Dunellen River access, health roads, et cetera, for improvements."
And if I could speak to that just briefly, I know you'll be taking your time and going through these, but that's a non-starter. All right, this isn't a tax, it's a registration fee. And under the law, the registration fees can only go to pay for the cost of the city to monitor the program, to do the administrative costs of, of the registration. It's not a profit-making enterprise. That, that would be a tax.
And as we go on, there's another correction suggested, and that's on line F. It says, "A copy of the sample lease agreement." She says, "Lease agreement is a legal agreement." I think the House rules are probably more informative. And then she goes on to line 261 and 62. She stricken the 10 days to correct deficiencies. She says, "More time is needed to address deficiencies that require repairs, purchases, et cetera. Getting a plumber, handyman, et cetera can take weeks." So she's, she's offering 30 days instead of 10.
Ms. Sid, would you mind if I take the next one?
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you. And I'm sorry to interrupt. On lines 267 through 269, what she's, the, the way it's written currently, it talks about how inspections may be required. And her suggestion is to remove that or to add to it may be required only upon a just written complaint so that no inspections of the property would occur until after a complaint was filed. So that does change, that changed the, the direction of how it was, it was worded. There are other things we should talk about, about paragraph seven and later meetings, but I just wanted to clarify what her request would do, how it would change it.
Thank you.
And section 304, she has stricken if an interconnect, connected and hardwired to change it to working, smoke and carbon monoxide detection. She says, "Battery operated smoke and CO detection devices should be permitted." So she's suggesting that it be battery instead of hardwire. And then she has gone ahead and stricken sections D, ENF. And her comments on that is that this is over the top for single-family homes. This is applicable for hotels, but unreasonable for homes. And then she goes ahead and say, and says, "Many homes no longer have landline telephones." Says, "Mobile phones are ambiguous." "It stands to reason that vacationers will be able to use their cellphones for emergencies faster than they, they'd be able to locate a landline." And from that, she goes to sections 332 through 335. And she has stricken that area and her comment to that is, "Seen in other ordinances spacing headcount on the number of full bathrooms would address the potential of overcrowding while allowing it to expand for a large home." And, and then another comment down on section 347 and 348. She's, she has stricken that too. And she says, "This is unreasonable. Guests make reservations many months in advance and are adjusting the people in their group up until they arrive. Nothing can prevent someone in the party from dropping out or someone new being added. As long as the primary guest responsible is taking responsibility for the whole party, the names in their party shouldn't matter. Hotels do not have to do this. Well, why should homeowners?" And then she goes on to section 388 to 390. There's a portion of it that's stricken. It says, "Be able to be available by telephone at the, at the listed phone number." And she stroked, stroked through 24 hours per day, seven days per week. And her comment is, "It seems unreasonable as most people sleep with and do not disturb settings on their phone. Consider requiring response with 24 hours to allow people to hear the voicemail and respond." And then she added, "Responsible party should respond within 24 hours." Then she goes on to sections 403 and 404. And she has stricken the section where it says, "And the license tag number for all vehicles that the occupant will be parking at the unit." And she says, "License tag is more on areas than hotel required." And then she has added a sentence to section 418 and 419 to say, "The maximum occupancy of the unit along with the maximum number of visitors on property at any time, date, trippers." On section 440, she added noise ordinance. And, and the comment says, "Should we add quiet hours to address noise?" I don't know what specifically is in the noise ordinance. And then the whole section on sexual offenders and human trafficking that goes from 454 to 475 is stricken. And her comment is that more in areas than hotels. Hotels do not ask this, nor do they do a criminal background screen. And as you go down, the section 479 through 495 is completely stricken. That's part of that sexual offenders and human trafficking. And she added, on section 510, where it talks about violations, it says, "Noncompliance with any provision of this article shall constitute a violation of the city code or ordinances." She added, "Late fees may be required and struck, instruct through and each day of violation exists shall constitute a separate and distinct violation." And her comment to that was, "There should be a penalty for violations and consider late fees, but to make each day a violation is undue burden." And then she goes on to section 520. And the section says, "Existing legally established vacation rentals in operation prior to the effective date of this ordinance may be confested in the ways described below." She added, "Provided they are otherwise in compliance with all other requirements contained herein to qualify for besting and existing." And then the rest of the verbiage is there. Her comment to that is, "This is unclear. Please explain what the difference in dates are or is that giving the city until 4/30/23?"
I know that, like, oh my gosh.
I think one of those Zoom people you left on.
I don't know what happened there. And then it goes right on to section 529 and 530. And she added, this is the part where it says rental agreement vesting. And she added, "All such fully executed rental agreements shall be attached to the initial application for vacation rental registration certificate." She made a comment there, "Sufficient to show the calendar, guest name, and dates. We're already booked through summer of 2023." And that is the end of her comments and suggestions to, to the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I think Ms. Sid clarified it just in case anybody was in doubt. Those are comments and suggestions. They're not in any way saying that we've amended it and that, that that's what you should consider the ordinance currently to be. But they're certainly, she's asking you to take a look at them.
Do, and should we set the, the date and time now or let our community development director for your schedule, your schedule for meetings?
To the extent it's possible, since a lot of the stakeholders are in the room. If you could, I, I don't, and I have no idea if it's possible to give a date now, but the appropriate procedure would be to, for a motion to continue this legislative hearing. That's what it is, not quasi-judicial legislative hearing until blank date and time, which you'll reconvene. That also is a better option than tabling it. There's some disagreement among parliamentarians about whether or not you can table something to the next meeting. But even if you can, the first thing you're supposed to do if that table doesn't, that meeting is take it off the table and address it.
Your schedule and Ms. Sid's, would you be able to give us some suggested times that we could go ahead and set the time?
You give me the dates, I'll tell you.
I think we have to take a look at our calendar and see what's available because I don't want, I don't want this to encumber into other meetings.
That makes sense, Mr. Bracken, that our intent is to continue this legislative hearing and within the next few days, we should have a date certain. Is that reasonable?
I agree.
It is. If you want to add any, like, we have a, I, I don't know when the next scheduled meeting is. And I know it's in August, but if you want it to be done before that time, you could put that in your motion too. You know, it, so we don't start looking at September or October for it, but some more clarification for staff.
I just foresee with this issue because it's going to take more than one meeting. And so that would be my suggestion is if someone would make a motion that we would continue the legislative hearing and will make all attempts to schedule the next meeting before the next scheduled planning commission meeting, if someone could make a motion.
I move that we reschedule another meeting to review the concerns and refine this ordinance so that we can submit it before the next planning meeting.
And you're extending the legislative.
Yeah, extending the legislative hearing. Okay. So I move that we. So I know that we extend the legislative hearing and reschedule another meeting so that we can have more time.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Your next meeting is scheduled for the sixteenth, so.
Pardon me?
Your next meeting is scheduled for the sixteenth of August, so it would be prior to that, the sixteenth of August.
So we will attempt to have a meeting prior to the sixteenth. Contingent upon your availability, Mr. Bracken's availability. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. And again, thank you for the audience for participating. This, we do really appreciate it and we'll do our due diligence and work very hard for you on this, so. All right.
I do have just one question.
Yes.
The next medium we're going to focus exclusively.
Yes.
This, uh, what?
This ordinance and, and go over the ordinance.
Yes. Not just what her complaint.
No, just the entire ordinance. We will go over the entire ordinance and review, make suggestions, recommended changes and so forth. And as the same as tonight, we'll recommend any input that you may have. Because some of you may not have even read the ordinance thoroughly, and some of you may have rethought some of the comments you have heard here tonight. And, um, may want some additional comments, uh, taken into consideration to add to the ordinance. So we would welcome all of that. The next item on the agenda, which I can't even find for my agenda is we have an agenda here. I think next item on the agenda is number three, which is the discussion or review of the proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven regarding nonconforming signs and documents. So we need the staff report for that.
Madam Chairman, if I could, do you mind if I?
Not at all.
Thank you. Okay. So you might be having deja vu. At our, at our last meeting, if you looked at the minutes, we had this ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash oh seven come before you for nonconforming signs. And what you may recall is I asked you in your motion, um, to, um, move to direct, uh, staff to come back to you with a complimentary comprehensive plan, uh, ordinance as well, so that, um, at the time, the, a comprehensive plan was, amendment was adopted, uh, that the ordinance would then be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So a couple of things about that. On the agenda, it has item number three for you again, which is the exact same ordinance you looked at last time. It would be helpful if you all considered it and did a, a vote on it. But it's more appropriate for you to skip item number three and go to item number four and consider the comprehensive plan amendment first. And decide whether or not you want to recommend it to be approved, to send to council for recommended for approval. And then you can go back to item three and readdress it. And if your opinion is still the same, or if it's changed, you can do that. That way we have a, the comprehensive plan, everything has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we, we want to do the comp plan first, then the code that would implement that change in the comprehensive plan.
So with that, we're actually looking at the ordinance twenty twenty-two ten first.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number four, I would agree with that suggestion. And we will have the staff report on that.
Yes, and the, and the purpose of this ordinance is to amend the comp plan, uh, the sections within the future land use element that addresses nonconforming structures to include a section for nonconforming signs and clarify their definition. So basically, here's the staff report. And we were able to, to review the, the, the future use element and find the, the com, the, that, that, that is in, in, in compliance that it, that it pertains to this, to this amendment, that it gets consistent with the amendment that we're trying to offer for approval.
I had, I had one question. We're on the, we're as clause on this saying we had the public hearing with the date left open.
That, that's because the public hearing will be held before the city council.
Okay.
Not before you, they do, it's a transmittal hearing.
Yeah.
They do it and, and that up to them, their pleasure, whether or not they do want to transmit. Then they would do the transmittal, um, up to the state. They would review it under the, uh, time period there. Then it would come back for the second hearing, uh, for city council then.
I personally had read and didn't have any questions. I'd like comments from the other commissioners. Sheffield?
I read it, but I didn't really look at it carefully, so.
Okay.
I defer.
I have read it.
You didn't have any questions or concerns for discussion? It's done?
I'm very much in favor of, of making an amendment, of doing this.
With that being said, then I need a motion, uh, that we would, um, accept, uh, moving the proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two ten is written to city council for review and acceptance.
I know that we approve the proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two ten to provide for an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan and code of ordinance to the city council for their.
Five seconds. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Bracken, you look like you had a comment to make?
No, no, ma'am.
And just as an information, um, and just for your information, we are presenting this to council. And, uh, we're advertising for the purposes of the, uh, legalities for this to come in front of you again in the next planning meeting.
The comp plan ordinance to come before them again?
Right.
Bye.
Um, I was advised by council to do that.
After they've, okay, we, we, we'll talk about it offline.
With that, then we go back to number three, the, the review of the proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven regarding nonconforming signs. As Mr. Bracken said, we've seen this once, but look it over again in the event that you have any questions. And, um, we have the staff report on that again, please.
Yes, and this is, this is basically, um, to address the code ordinance, uh, to amend the code of ordinances. Um, and it's going to change, uh, section two appendix A of the zoning article. Eleven signs of, uh, the city's code of ordinance, um, is proposing to be revised to update nonconforming sign regulations, including, uh, regulations pertaining to existing billboards within the city limits. And this was already presented to you. This is just a legality.
Now you have the benefit of the comprehensive plan amendment, proposed comprehensive plan amendment, which this ordinance would be consistent with if it were adopted.
Right, so that it covers all the bases.
Right, commissioners, discussion, questions? We've seen this before.
I have reviewed it and I am a hundred percent in agreement.
And I as well.
Ms. Sheffield? Seems consensus. All right, then, uh, do we have a motion that we would approve the ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven to be forwarded to council?
That we approve the ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh seven to move to city council.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item here is reports and updates. I don't have any reports at this time. Any commissioners, any reports that you wanted to make?
No.
Any reports or updates? Any, if anyone needs to give any?
We do have.
Reports.
I, I don't have any reports myself, but we do have, uh, Mayor White in the audience. I don't know if he wants to make any reports for council.
We do have opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items.
Yeah, yes, we do. Because that, that was after reports and updates. We have public comment. So if there are no other reports and updates, again, second opportunity, we'll take public comment at this time. Mr. Mayor, did you want to speak?
Yes. I was, I was waiting. I was waiting for it.
Good gracious. Asking Elton John if he wants to sing. Of course he wants to sing. Uh, Bill White, you know, one, two, one, one, five, Paul Metalway, I am the mayor. Seems like Paul Metalway. I've heard that. Kind of like ground zero, I guess.
I do want to compliment the, uh, planning commission. You are dealing with a couple very meaty and important items, um, which some big time stuff, a lot of weight on your shoulders. Uh, you do have the council waiting for us to come and uh, we're looking forward to your good work and we'll take it from there. I just have a few things, just, um, make just brief comments on, just to keep you up to speed. We do have a budget workshop tomorrow at three P M. This is a, a workshop that's pretty much going to place the budget for the coming year. It won't be approved at the workshop, but it will be thoroughly discussed. A budget workshop is maybe one of the most boring experiences you can ever sit through. But at the same time, it's also one of the most important. There's no question that what city council does with the money, the tax money, and how it allocates it and cuts up the pie could be singularly the most important thing we do. So that's a very important workshop. It's going to kind of set the table where the money's going to go for the next year. The, um, Powell property that has been long discussed has been closed on. So that is now the property, uh, of the city. That is proposed as the future home of the police department. Where council is to be right now is that we have come up with X amount of dollars that we will earmark toward the police department building. But the remainder of it must come from either grants or outside sources. So right now we have somewhere under six hundred thousand dollars that has been earmarked. And that figure will remain solid until the rest of it is financed by somewhere else. Couple, uh, ordinances that are in place. Blue Run Park, spend a lot of time on Blue Run Park. An ordinance that's going to be considered and probably passed is a definition of what our nature trails can be worked, uh, used for. Uh, we do not want our nature trails, that means the unimproved trails, used for the transport of equipment and things. It's totally contrary to what a nature trail is. So we're going to define that and eliminate that. We're also going to require the shuttle services that are coming into the park to be clearly identified that they are KP hole shuttles. We'll have to have letters of at least five inches tall that can be seen from fifty feet that identify the KP shuttle. You all know that we do have a long-term agreement with the county that the shuttle can come into the park and pick up the tubers and the kayakers from KP hole. But that's the only shuttle that's allowed in the park. A little bit of disappointing news, one of the big projects for this council has been to emphasize some road construction. We have two major projects, Ohio and Cedar Street, that are totally, supposed to be totally paved. We also have some big projects in Blue Cove where we're going to redo some of the major intersections. Unbelievably, even though that these projects are ready to go, they're on hold right now because of a shortage of asphalt. Just makes me want to tear my head out. You have these projects approved, you have the money earmarked, you have the construction companies lined up. Everybody's ready to go and now you can't get asphalt. Any major construction project in this day and age is a true, true challenge. It's quite amazing. Some good news though, um, we did get notification that our major construction project, building a pedestrian bridge over the Rainbow River. And the, uh, improvement, two and a half million dollar improvement on West Pennsylvania Avenue has been supposed to start in two thousand twenty-three. We're really, really excited about that. The improvements on West Penn, uh, Pennsylvania Avenue will be the use of some turn lanes, some bicycle lanes. And there will be a, uh, protection barrier put on the current bridge so people can walk and bicycle safely over the Rainbow River Bridge. Very excited about that. It's been a long, long time coming. You may have heard that, uh, the legislature has redistricted, uh, the state house. So we do have a new state representative Ralph Masulu. Uh, our old, um, state representative Joe Hardy. He, his district has been moved a little north of us. So Ralph Masulu, who is a three-term rep who is going for his term. His district has been expanded from Citrus County and includes Adano and up to and past Rainbow Springs. So, uh, we're very excited to, uh, uh, have Ralph Masulu. Uh, many of us know him. He's a skin doctor in the area. Many of us have had him actually carve on us. So knowing him and now have any, uh, relationship with Joe Hardy kind of gives me a feeling we have two friends in the, uh, legislature right now. You might know that the elections are coming up. Council has just made a resolution putting that into play out of the, uh, five council seats that are currently there. Three of them are up for grabs. Luis Kenny's seat, uh, Anita Williams' seat and Valerie Hanchar's seat are all up for grabs. No one yet has announced what their intentions are, whether they're going to run or not. And one last thing. We're working real hard on trying to come up with an idea for the boat ramp fees that now the boat ramp in the parking area is controlled by the city. We need income to keep the boat ramp in that area repaired. We're probably looking at starting some sort of boat ramp fee sometime in the fall. We're doing that on purpose. We don't want to implement something like that in the middle of the summer when, uh, everything's busy, because we do know there will be some glitches and some bugs to work out. So we're purposely going to do it in the fall when things are a little slower. Uh, what the fees may be, we do not know yet and how we're going to collect the fees, we do not know yet. But we have several ideas out there that we're kicking around. So I just gave you what takes us four hours to do in less than ten minutes.
That's because we're not interrupting.
Any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate you taking your time to come and give us the reports because you're very busy and we do appreciate your time.
I do. And, and likewise, I, I've said this before, I have found coming to these commission meetings actually gives me a little bit of a head start on what's coming my way. I found initially when I got on the council, things were pushed in front of me that were very close to a vote that I had not had an opportunity to really know too much about it or how and what the genesis of it was. So I find this is very helpful for me to sit, see what you're doing and listen. So I feel it makes me more prepared to make a good. So I find this is very helpful for me to sit, see what you're doing and listen. So I feel it makes me more prepared to make a good decision.
I wanted to make a comment too, that I'm, I'm very happy to see that Dunell and citizens are stepping up more and becoming more involved in Dunell and's government. And I commend the new council for that and appreciate your accessibility and wanting citizens to get involved. A lot of times, um, there is pushback when we make feelings known, but it comes from a place of really wanting Dunell to be a better place. So even though people might not agree, it really comes from the heart. So I appreciate what, everything that the council and this board is doing to improve citizen involved.
Because I want to thank Ms. Dunn over here for all her really hard work. We don't have what we would be without you.
If you, if you would ask me, the input I've get, I receive from the residents in the area comparing the city now compared to a couple of years ago, two, three years ago, is the friendliness, the attitude, the acceptability, like you said, of the council commission making ourselves very open and easy to talk to, make people feel welcome to come to the meetings. I have found that our council meetings have a lot of people coming now. They, they feel like it's a, a good, good thing to do. Maybe we can get to start charging a fee. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, other comments, please.
Julianne Mendel, so one, one, eight, nine, four, East Blue Cove Drive. I, this is a little bit off topic, but it's a subject that always has a way of coming back around, and that's the police station. And I know that some time ago, prior to the purchase of the Powell Road property, that community, community services director, community development director, had identified, was tasked with identifying which, what were the possible properties within our city. And then we had, she gave a really thorough support, a really thorough report of all the different properties, the pros and cons, and eventually it led to a decision about Powell Road. The planning commission meeting before that, Mr. Pierpont, who I've never met, but I did listen to this meeting online. He had some interesting suggestions about how to approach it, maybe a little bit different than we were approaching it, which I just wanted to call out because I thought that they were really helpful and valuable. And then there was some discussion from the planning council about, can we, you know, can we make suggestions about this or can we weigh in on this? I heard each of the five people individually weigh in on the Powell Road property. I think from my understanding at these planning commission meetings, that it came, it came to the consensus that you would not be reporting to the council with any recommendations as a group. The words were, it could be done as individual citizens, but that you wouldn't be putting something forth as a group, which I respect, and I'm still learning a lot about the planning commission. But when I looked at the, the Muni Code, section ninety-four dash thirty-seven, it says that part of the planning commission's task is to make or cause to be made any special studies on location, condition, and adequacy of specific facilities in the area that may include, but are not limited to, studies on housing, commercial, industrial conditions, facilities, public and private utilities, traffic, transportation, and parking. So I'm just wanting to clarify for myself the position of the planning commission in contributing to the decisions that are going to the police station. Because while all five people on the planning commission publicly stated some concerns about Powell Road, when it came down to the council and the vote, the planning, the community development director spoke out both as a professional and as a resident, in which at one point there was a home address beginning to be stated. And it was an opinion that was in direct opposition to all of the five people. So I'm just trying to get a better understanding. We don't have to speak to it, but you know, maybe at some point it can be explained to me. What's the, what is this group when it comes to making recommendations according to Muni Code and what the responsibilities are of the planning commission versus what the staff is feeling and how if that's not connected and that's not cohesive, how are we going to keep going? Because if we have zoning decisions on the police station and it comes before the planning board and you guys make a decision, I know that your decisions can be over, overridden by council. But I'm just concerned that if the staff and the residents who have volunteered to be on this board are not on the same page in such a public forum, that's very concerning to me. So I thank you for hearing me. And I want to just call out, I know you can't call out people for comment, but I do want to thank you, Brenda, for all of your years of sticking with this, sticking with the city, sticking with the planning council. I mean, you've got to be one of the most longstanding chair people here, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Bracken, do you have any comments?
Answering your questions.
Okay. Maybe we can have a private discussion sometime. I won't, I won't make any further comments, but thank you very much. I, it's very much appreciated. Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, again, thank you for your participation. And do I have a, yes, you have a comment?
We're going to meet before the sixteenth. Is this correct?
We're, we're attempting to have a meeting before August sixteenth.
So we will be notified and give dates to pick from. We're going to be, I'm going to be out like a half.
Yes.
Half month of August.
Well, you will have to call in and participate.
I don't think I'll be able to.
No, that's okay.
I have just one comment regarding Ms. Dunn's motion to change the wording and all that stuff. I know she said verbatim. We were taking minutes from the audio. That isn't completely accurate. I've been taking minutes this entire meeting, then I go back, listen to the audio. We don't type everything out verbatim. The purpose of the minutes is to serve as a summary of the meeting, highlighting important talking points. The meeting audio is available if anybody wants to hear every single thing that was said. And that's why we don't capture it in its entirety. So just to be clear.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, I do understand why you have to type what is said, not what might be more clear. Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
All right. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I say something personal?
Oh, yes, please.
It has been my intention to retire, which I have done mostly, but I was also going to retire from this commission. But if tonight's meeting is any indication of what's to come, I think it's going to be a lot more exciting, so I'm going to stay.
Thank you. We'll, we'll try to keep you interested.
She actually asked me, should I be there? And I said, yes.
All right.
My employee lawyer fees.
Now that we have a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, it's seven forty-nine and we are adjourned and thank you for your time.